Good evening and welcome to the February 8th, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Agenda for Thursday, February 8th, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting be approved as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Borcherdin.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye.
Moving on to our consent of consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for comment, question, or a separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Tominski. Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Borcherdin.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye.
We have two informational presentations tonight before a consideration of approving the agreements. We'll begin tonight with the informational presentation to consider of approving the Shive Hattery as a consulting firm for CRCSD's Pebble and 2025 Bond Planning. We'll have Chad Schumacher, Director of Operations, introduce the group. Chad?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Kate Weber. Quick introduction, I'm a lifelong Cedar Rapidian. I'm a mom of two girls who attend Johnson Steam Academy. I'm an employee owner and an HR manager at Van Meter, and I'm a community cabinet member, which is how I found myself to be here today. So I'm here to share a little bit about the process for the interviews that took place a couple of weeks ago in hopes of selecting a partner for the district in the next bond vote. So there were 15 stakeholders from the district and the community who were involved in the process, and the names are listed there. We first independently reviewed each RFP from the five firms. So we had five to consider, mostly from the Midwest, and we first independently reviewed each RFP utilizing a scoring matrix to rank them based on the information they provided in their proposals. So that was done first. And then on January 18th, we all got together and met and had about a 15-minute prep to go over the process for the day so that everybody was on the same page. Chad shared what the overarching objectives for the consultant were, and we were provided a question set for us to utilize if we did not feel like we were getting the answers we wanted, or a clear understanding of how the firm could meet our objectives. So we all went in with that clear understanding that first things first, we need to find a partner for the district who can help secure a past bond vote in 2025. So we listened to each firm, we asked questions, and then debriefed as a group after all five firms had presented. So we waited until we had seen everybody's presentation before we debriefed as a group. There was a very healthy discussions on the strengths and areas of concern for each, and then we each anonymously ranked the five and then tallied up the scores. So there were two clear contenders, and ultimately, as a group, we decided to select Shive Hattery and their partner MA Plus Architecture. And Chad will talk a little bit about how that came to be here in a minute, but I would just say that from a participant, I felt like the process was very collaborative. It felt like a very safe environment for us all to share our thoughts and opinions, and ultimately, I believe that we walked away feeling very confident in this choice. Thank you.
Thank you. So we did have two contenders that were very close in score, so we did have a robust conversation after we rank ordered those firms. And some of the things that we needed to consider when we decided to go with Shive was the fact that we had a clear vision of wanting to have an urban, a firm that had urban experience so they could tackle that part of our process. And MA Plus brings that experience to the table. As you can see, and I don't want to steal their thunder because I think they're going to talk a little bit about this, but as you can see, they worked with Oklahoma City Public Schools and Norman Public Schools, and they're going to share with you kind of the similarities that those public schools have to the Cedar Rapids Public Schools and how that's going to benefit us. Another factor that weighed into the decision of the interview committee was the local knowledge of Shive Hattery. Shive Hattery has worked with the district in the past and was instrumental in the facility evaluations during the 2018 elementary plan development. Additionally, Shive Hattery understands the dynamics of Cedar Rapids, local government, and how to navigate relationships building with key city stakeholders. And finally, the interview committee was impressed with the preparation of Shive Hattery and their dedication to pulling the team together that specifically meets the needs of our district. The need to reach the voters of the previous bond referendum is a key component to moving forward, and Shive Hattery understood this and had already dove into gathering voter data showing us heat maps of voter turnout and voters' voting results. Through our discussions, the interview committee came to a consensus, and we decided that Shive Hattery and MA Plus was the team that we wanted to pair with. So we know that they're going to lead us to a successful Pebble and bond vote. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you guys Shive Hattery and their team.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Aqui Engie, and we're actually going to start with just a really brief exercise, if you don't mind, taking a pen and a piece of paper, and anybody in the room could do this. And I understand we've got a couple of board members who are also zooming in, so take a piece of paper and a pen, and in just 30 seconds, write down in one or two words what is most important to you about the facility's master plan. In one or two words, what is most important to you about the facility's master plan? Okay, I promised you about 20 seconds. I think I gave you 15. Can anybody, does anybody mind sharing what you wrote down?
I wrote down just one or two words.
Yeah.
You wrote down innovative and scalable.
Thank you.
May have already participated in this as a member of the RFP team, but equitable and safe.
Thank you.
I wrote down everyone involved.
Awesome. Thank you. So I'm sure that if we were to go around the room, anybody who participated in that just now, probably each of you wrote something down that was different than the next person, right? That exercise is a microcosm of what the experience is currently is in our community. Each community member or each group of stakeholders in our community has a different primary priority or primary value that they articulate as it comes, as it relates to the facility's master plan. We all believe that this team is the one that is coming together to ensure that by the end of this process, the community has one shared goal, one shared articulated vision that gets us through the finish line with enthusiasm and excitement. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started.
Yes. So to introduce myself, my name is Michael Clean. I have been an architect for over 14 years specializing in K-12 education projects. And then one little niche thing is I'm also a SEPTED specialist, and that stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and we'll touch base with that a little bit later. But I will be your primary contact with the entire district moving forward on everything.
Yeah, I'm Greg Kans. I grew up in Cedar Rapids, and I grew up with Shive Hattery. I've been there 27 years. And Shive Hattery has a 50-year relationship with the districts. We're excited to, we were there for the last successful bond vote and the last successful Pebble, and we're excited to go with you on this new journey. So thank you.
And I'm Aqui Engie. Some of us know each other already. I'm a communications strategist, and we're all ultimately working together to make the world a better place, whether we're doing that through architecture and design and engineering or through education. I happen to do that through communication. Communication is my primary tool that I use to build stronger, more unified communities. I also have really deep roots in Cedar Rapids as a school district and as a community. So I was nearly born and raised, not quite, in Cedar Rapids, graduated from Washington High School, taught at Washington High School for 11 years, taught Language Arts, and then eventually was right here in this building as Communications Director for several years. And my children also articulated through the system as well. So the bottom line is that I nearly live and breathe Cedar Rapids community and Cedar Rapids School District, and it is my pleasure and honor in this particular project to be joining Shive Hattery in support of the school district and the community.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Armbruster. I'm Principal Architect and Partner at MA Plus Architecture in Oklahoma City. I also have 27 years of experience with my firm at MA Plus and in education facility design specifically. I am an accredited learning environment planner, which we will bring to the team, and I will be your education facility planner for this bond project.
Good evening. My name is Heath Tate. I am also a principal and partner at MA Plus Architecture. I have been working with MA Plus or at MA Plus for 24 years now. I'm kind of excited to say that next year I get to say I've been doing it for a quarter of a century, so I'm kind of looking forward to that. I'm a bit of an odd duck when it comes to architects. Most architects want to really enjoy the planning and the design side and really kind of the artistic vision that gets created. I really enjoy the data, the research, the numbers. Like, give me all the information, all the data, and I love to digest it and kind of really understand what we're looking at. And in that way, like, I'm a bit unusual as far as architects go, but that's why I also work on leading the bond planning, because there's so much information that has to be absorbed with any school district that really has to be understood, and that's really where I excel.
So you're probably asking the question, why this team? And as you see up here on this Venn diagram, there are seven different components up there that all play into the, excuse me, play into a successful bond referendum. And if you miss a step, that could be the difference between a successful bond referendum and a failed bond referendum. And I truly believe that with everyone that hears, that is here tonight presenting to you, we're able to hit that sweet spot in the middle to give you a successful bond referendum. And so I think we're going to, right now, we're going to dive into, I believe Gary's going to be talking a little bit about his K-12 education experience.
Yeah, so that's the first section we want to discuss is our experience with K-12 education. Our team as a whole has completed well over 1,000 school projects. Our combined team experience between Shive Hattery and MA Plus is well over 125-plus years. As I mentioned earlier, I am an accredited learning environment planner. I'm one of seven in the state of Oklahoma, and I'm one of eight in the state of Iowa. So we'll bring that experience to the team. We have a lot of safety and security experience. I've heard someone say that safety was one of their things that they had written down on Aqui's thing that she just did. I was the only architect appointed by the Lieutenant Governor to serve on the Oklahoma School Security Commission after Sandy Hook. Since then, I've become a national speaker on school security-related items. As Michael mentioned earlier, he is the only SEPTED certified architect in the state of Iowa. And finally, our team has the urban school district experience that you were looking for, and we will bring that experience to Cedar Rapids.
So part of being an educational designer is really learning to listen to the client and really understanding kind of the issues that need to be solved. Part of that listening really comes and stems from an intent of collaboration that we bring as in everything that we do. We want to hear all voices. We want to work with everybody to really find the best, perfect solution, which usually leads to very unique solutions in every case. But we do that by starting to listen as part of a communication strategy, as Aqui will explain.
And just a side note, you'll notice the Venn diagram in the far, the upper left-hand corner, we're just moving through that Venn diagram with these different pieces of the puzzle. So with communications expertise, I pride myself in being a communications expert in a variety of ways, building emotionally charged storytelling initiatives and campaigns that are information-based to boost engagement and enthusiasm and trust for a school district or a community. In this particular process, as a team working together in our first few meetings, we talked about just how many different layers of communication types and skillsets are required for a project of this scale, complexity, and magnitude. Everything from news media relations to public relations, marketing, branding, internal and external stakeholder communications, most of those are frankly their own college degree. And you have that combination with this team of MA Plus and Shive Hattery right here with this project. Most recently, I worked with Waterloo Schools. I also worked on a project with Marshalltown Community School District. And with those two particular projects, we focused on storytelling in the community with campaigns that were ultimately going to be requesting the community to engage in change. Now, I spoke at an NSPR, it's National School and Public Relations Association Conference in the fall, based on that expertise, which led to me communicating with eight other school districts around the country with exact same themes and processes and strategies that we are excited to use for this particular process as well. And the familiarity with the community, you've already heard me mention just a little bit, but it goes deep both with Shive Hattery and with my communications background. So as I mentioned, almost born and raised in Cedar Rapids, we've got an incredible familiarity with the school district, with the community, and Shive Hattery in particular, you mentioned that there's about a 50-year history. I joke, like, that's longer than some of us have been alive, which I think is pretty cool. But what that also means is that that level of familiarity with our facilities, they can practically jump right in on day one with a level of familiarity that is truly unique and unprecedented in terms of the other firms that were invited into this process.
Yes. And one thing to add is, you know, Shive Hattery is a 125-year-old company headquartered here in Cedar Rapids, but what's important here is we have people like Greg Kans, who is connected to the community, who is wanting to reach out, and we have several of our employees that are involved within the district and within the community, trying to make Cedar Rapids a better place. And so this is one of the reasons we're so excited to be working on this project.
The next very important item we want to discuss is the bond marketing expertise that Shive Hattery and MA Plus brings to the table. Bond marketing is crucial to a successful yes vote. We all know that. And of the thousands of education projects that our teams worked on, we've been involved in marketing for each and every one of those projects. So it's something that comes in every education project. We have expertise of community engagement, creating content for community presentations, coordinating local organizations to create messaging, and images like you see on screen that may be an image of a particular school site. We in-house will create this image to let the voters know exactly what's going to happen at each and every school site. And the other thing we'll do is create any 3D video animation that you need, all created in-house by our team. On this next one, as we go around the circle, the next thing we want to talk about is master planning expertise. We've done well over $1 billion worth of projects in the last 15 years that were master planned, hundreds of master planned education projects. And in a master plan, you always want to look at it in a way as you build for today, but you design for tomorrow. And I think that's an important component of any master plan that we look at, whether it's a district master plan or a master plan for a single school project, we want to look into the future. And so the image that you see up on screen is an example of one of our projects where we looked at a particular school site from the 2008, 2012, 2017, and now we're working on the 2023 bond currently. And each of the blue dots that represent the future, those were always changing throughout the design process. We were always looking five and 10 years into the future as we developed a master plan. And each school is a microcosm of the entire district. If we look at each school and master plan it successfully, we come up with a plan of growth for the entire district.
Yeah, so kind of leaning in on what Gary was talking about with master planning, all of that information feeds up to the overall bond plan. Now, we know the bond plan is more than just, you know, building infrastructure. We understand that you're going to have, you know, textbook purchases, bus purchases, and technology upgrades that enhance the infrastructure there. So that, that all becomes part of that bond plan process that we've got to work through with you to figure out how much money gets allocated to each portion. And through over 40 years of experience between Gary and I working through bond planning with all of our clients, like, that, that is an important understanding, is it's not just all about the buildings. You know, as architects, we love buildings, but that's not the only thing we have to work about with school districts. There's something we say quite often is designing for a school district is essentially designing for a small city with all of the needs and issues that school districts have to work through, that we have to really think of it in that way. Transportation, food, all of those things have to be considered through the bond planning process. Also, I wanted to kind of brag a little bit, but over the last five years, we've been involved in bond planning for over $2 billion worth of projects for school districts. And it's not just about, you know, the facility's assessment, but that is a large component of what we do, whether it's working with existing assessments or going out looking at buildings to see what the needs are, really understanding what the issues are. As these buildings age over time, that is something that we have to consider. There's routine maintenance that has to be done, and if we can't, if we can't do that maintenance, the term becomes deferred maintenance that we have to address at some point in the life of that building. And at some point, you have to decide how much maintenance is too much on a building, and when does it become appropriate to replace that building? Those are all considerations that have to be considered with every single, every single district that we've worked with.
Yes. Now, one of the nice things about the assessments is we have all the engineering in-house. So if we need to look at roofing issues or structural issues, we have all the different engineers and specialists in-house ready to serve you locally. So as a kind of, as a kind of a recap of why this team, as you can see, we have the local, the local team to provide the support that you need. We have the urban education experience, and then we also have all the experts that you need and you deserve to move forward.
And when we talk about moving forward, we're ultimately talking about massive change. And we all know that massive change comes with a lot of emotion, whether you're a parent or a guardian who just sent a kid off to college in the fall, or you've got a kid going into kindergarten, or you've got a grandkid going off, or some major change is happening at home. Major change comes with a lot of major emotions, whether they're positive emotions, optimism, enthusiasm, eagerness for what's ahead, or emotions that we consider negative but are very natural and important, apprehension, curiosity, skepticism, right? So what we understand is that we're talking about a community in Cedar Rapids who has an incredible number of really important values, and this plan invites them to consider massive change around those values. And when we talk about that massive change, what we're doing is trying to create current state to future state. Current state, we're working with restrainers and forces against change because we haven't perhaps articulated a plan that's co-created with the community or that's detail-oriented in specific ways. And moving towards the future with those forces for change that you see on, on the board. Now, one of the things that I get personally geeked out about, and I'm trying to contain myself just a little bit, the people who know me know that I'm loud and I'm the colorful one, I've got my highlighters and all of that, but one of the things that got me really excited about this team, Shive Hattery and MA Plus coming together, was some of our initial conversations. When I was trying to decide, okay, is this a thing that can actually work? All right? Because like some of you perhaps, I've been skeptical, like, oh my gosh, are we ever going to see something like this through in a way that, that is with optimism and enthusiasm? And in our first conversations with Heath and Gary, I was like, first of all, skeptical. All right, well, I don't know. How much can Oklahoma know about Iowa? How much can they actually help us? And how similar can they possibly be? Those are my just general questions. And in those initial conversations, I was like, oh my gosh, wait a minute. We walked through really specific levels of detail. Well, demographics, stakeholder groups, leadership changes, a variety of things. And I'm like, oh my gosh, they've gone through something similar, and not only have they gone through something similar, they've seen it through with success. So with that in mind, I'll let Gary and Heath talk a little bit about the similarities.
So two years ago, we were asked to work with Oklahoma City Schools to help prepare them for the bond in November of 2022. And that was, at the time, it was undetermined how big it was going to be, but it ended up being a $955 million bond vote, and at the time, the largest in the, in the history of the state of Oklahoma for school districts. One of the challenges that we discovered as we started working with the district is there was a lot of disharmony between the city and the school district. There were a lot of issues there that needed to be addressed, and there was a strong lack of trust that the school district knew what they were doing. Now, that trust was eroded over time. It wasn't anything that happened overnight. But to give you a snapshot of just a brief element of what some of those trust issues arose from, we had 15 superintendents in a 12-year period. In one case, the superintendent lasted a month before he resigned. And so you never had consistent leadership. You had a breakdown of communication from the administration level at the site, the school site level. You had a breakdown between the administration and the school, or the Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Oklahoma City. And the superintendent that came in to start, you know, really working on that has done a masterful job. He deserves a lot of credit for that. But a lot of the challenges that we had to overcome arose from 20 years of issues that were boiling over at the school district. You can see, we had, we still are working with activist groups and preservation, historic preservation groups to save some of the significantly historic buildings in the Oklahoma City School District. We went through an assessment process. We realized how much it was going to take to really reinvest in these buildings. And through those discussions, we realized that there was, there were some buildings that really needed to be saved for the history that they represented. So working through all of those issues with community groups, with district leadership, with the Chamber of Commerce, who was a strong, became a strong partner for us, those were all issues that we had to overcome to get to a yes vote in November of '22. On the next slide, you're going to see a little bit more about the school district and how it compares to Cedar Rapids. Age of the buildings was an issue that also had to be looked at. And then just some demographics of voters, you know, the number of buildings and the number of students we're working with, those are all components that, you know, we looked at as being very similar from an urban school district standpoint. Now, the question then be, go ahead, Aqui, go ahead.
I like to jump in here because the numbers of students and the numbers of buildings, like numerically, that may not seem like a similarity, but both districts are the second-largest school district in their states, and in proportion to the size of their communities, both districts are very, very similar.
The next thing to kind of really talk about is, okay, how did we succeed? What was that process and what did it look like? So what you're seeing in front of you now is a little bit of a roadmap, and I'm going to cheat because I've got one here on my screen, so if you see my eyes cutting up, I can see it a little bit better. But there are four distinct processes that we discovered that really kind of had to take place simultaneously as we went through the bond planning process. We needed a steering committee, and that was really made up of administrative leaders within the district from all levels, though, from principals, from directors of programs. Even board members were present in some of these meetings. And the idea was that we needed leadership to really help guide the process and be part of an informed process. We also knew that we needed a bond campaign team. We were going to need somebody who, who had the ability to go out and say, vote yes for this. And we know school districts aren't allowed to do that. So having a good, strong component, in the case of Oklahoma City Schools, that was the Chamber of Commerce for Oklahoma City. But we really had to work to get them on our side. And then you've got a community engagement piece. You really cannot pass a strong bond without having good feedback and good communication within the community. And then the long-range planning team, that's made up of your architects, your designers, your, your operate, Director of Operations, and including the superintendent at times we will bring in, and we'll really kind of work through that planning process to look at the long-range vision that we're trying to establish for the school district. Now, as we go through these processes, I like to think of it as the first one, and you'll see those red boxes there, kind of identify and break up this, this graph, this schedule. The first one really is, you know, let's collect information and identify what the needs of the district are. So it becomes that moment of we realize what all of the issues are that we're facing. And there's usually a convergent point with all of these groups where we have a presentation that goes out that says, these are the needs of the school district. It's not about presenting solutions. It's about presenting the problems that we're faced with. Then, everybody, as in each of those four process groups, really kind of moves towards, okay, let's start working on solutions. The next The next convergent point is when all of those solutions coalesce into what becomes the initial bond program, and that's that next red box that you see there. And then we move from that and immediately kind of start rolling into, let's, let's start campaigning, let's start getting the message out of what we're doing for the school district. Let's build that energy within the community so that we lead everybody to that yes vote. And and through these four different processes and groups, that's how we achieved success at Oklahoma City Schools. Well, I always forget this part, even in our presentation, I almost skipped right over it the first time. But one of the elements that really kind of made that process successful is that it was a transparent process. And in everything we do, I'm a big believer that transparency builds trust. And and that is a very important component anytime you're asking the public to get behind an agenda.
Thanks, Heath. And talking about building trust, it starts by listening and give everybody a voice. And we're talking about two paths to do that. One is a quantitative approach, which is survey every registered voter in Cedar Rapids. We're going to send a direct mail survey to every registered voter in Cedar Rapids. And I know it sounds old-fashioned to direct mail, but it's a great thing to do. We want to give everybody a different channel that they can respond and provide feedback. So we'll have a digital option, also a paper option. At the same time, do a qualitative approach and talk to key leaders throughout the city. I think Chad, Awkward, and I have been meeting, and we've come up with a list of 100 already. You know, key people, key groups that we can connect with to start to build and listen and understand the issues. And give everybody a voice is really what we want to do. And the big takeaway, if you look at the data, 75% of the people didn't vote. So what is the silent 75 saying? We got to reach that group, find out what's on their mind, how do we engage them in the process? And we did a quick heat map of the voting. You can see the darker red is the intensity, the no. We had a supermajority no vote, but you can see where the pockets of support are. There are five precincts that had more yes votes than no votes along First Avenue, which is interesting. We want to look at these areas and figure out what's driving the turnout and what issues are important in different parts of the city. And again, here for the people that did not vote. And then the people that did not vote, there's some low turnout in these precincts across the city. What what's going on there? How can we better engage those areas of the city? We want everybody to have a chance and a say in the future bond plan. And then we had high turnout, which is great. So what was driving that turnout at the vote? What is motivating them? What's going to resonate with them to make sure that we can get to a supermajority support? So the plan is in harmony with with the community.
And one of the things that I think is also really cool about this collection of folks on this team is that you have experts who understand the relationship between data-driven decisions and emotional, this is, that's not going out because of us, and emotion-driven decisions. So all humans make essentially emotion-driven decisions, right? We may have a car in mind, a vehicle in mind, we've done all our research, we know how many miles, we know all of that. And then at the end of the day, you go to the car lot and you're like, ah, I like this shiny one, right? No, it's not always the case for everybody. But we recognize the combination and the relationship between those two decision-making styles. And we know that we need to be data-informed without necessarily creating a process of data-led. One of the things that comes to mind for me is a particular marketing campaign that occurred many years ago, if you just bear with me, it was a laundry detergent company. They'd done a bunch of research, and they'd seen success in their product going off the shelves and into the homes of their consumers. And then there was a plateau. They started to gather information, all sorts of information, qualitative and quantitative, like Greg has talked about. And then at a certain point, they thought, there's still something that we're missing. How do we collect a specific sort of information? They thought, maybe we install cameras in the laundry rooms of people across the country. And so they asked, can we install laundry, cameras in your laundry rooms? And folks said, yes, absolutely. And so cameras were installed in laundry rooms. And what they discovered by viewing that content was that nearly 100% across the board, although their customers had told them that what they wanted most, what was most important, was laundry that made their whites whiter and their brights brighter, which is what they actually were given. What customers did when they pulled their laundry out of the dryer was smell it, to see if it smelled clean. And what was born was fresh linen scent, right? And so I just offer you that story as an indication of the really intricate, complex relationship between what people tell us they want, like the things that you've written down in your notes, the information that's guiding your decision-making, and how we can marry those two things so that we have a co-created plan between the school district and the community that everyone can get behind. So I speak a lot about communication. I'm I'm a word geek. I look up etymologies, the histories of words. The word common language and the word community come from the same Latin root word, which means to make common, to make one, to bring people together around a shared vision and goal. And so that's the strategy that I take with communications, and you have a team of experts who utilize communications in a variety of different ways. When we talk about establishing a common language, that can be a really 30,000-foot view of what we mean by that, and then also like nitty-gritty into the details. 30,000-foot view is, who are we as a school district? What do we value? Who are we as a community and what do we value? How do we create common language around that? Deeper layers of common language in this process, in the community engagement sessions, for instance, go to, what do we actually mean by classroom? If we did that same exercise that we started this off with, what is a classroom? What is the definition of a classroom? There would be at least five different definitions in this room. It's really critical that we create common language throughout this process around, what do we mean by updated? What do we mean by innovative? What do we mean by modern? What do we mean by future-ready learning? Right? So through this process, we're really eager to do that. And by doing that, we're also introducing this essence of everyone has a voice. Everyone has a voice. The work that Greg speaks specifically about really relates to that. Surveys, quantitative, qualitative, district leadership, teachers, staff, and teachers' union, senior citizens, households with students, business leadership. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. For those of you who have this particular document in front of you, the thorough list is is right here. So just recognizing that there are a variety of different stakeholder groups with different primary values and ensuring that we're co-creating a process that doesn't necessarily minimize those values. So like those different values that you wrote down, not necessarily minimizing them, but creating a process that honors them in a in a plan that is cohesive and can move us forward.
So what does that give us, like through this entire process? Everything we've been talking about in Awkward as well, towards, you know, talking about that communication component? It really comes down to, we listen, we inform, we share out information. And that that information goes both ways, like that that's a continual discussion between all the community groups and all the groups that are involved in this. And then that turns into collaboration. How are we going to solve these problems that we're dealing with? In Oklahoma City Schools, we had our first community group, first community meeting was between 70 and 80 people in the room. And everybody came in as individuals that did not trust anybody else in the room. And and you could feel that. There was a real tension in the room with that, where everybody assumed that somebody has an agenda, it's going to go against me, I've got to fight for mine. And that was a really common thought process. But we all kind of coalesced around one thought, and it was, we can do better by our students. We want to do better for our students. And that became the driving goal that everybody could agree on. We want to be better for our students. And what happened through this entire process, and it took time, but through this sharing of information, this collaboration, and this listening exercises that we went through, everybody kind of unified around solutions. We all ended up agreeing that this is the best path forward. And what came out of those community groups was one voice. Everybody came out supporting the bond, and everybody said, this is the right way forward. And everybody left from that group and became ambassadors for the bond plan around the entire community. We could call on any one of them, and they would gladly step up and say, we can do this. This is the right way. I was involved. I heard everything that they talked about, and this is the way we do it. And that led to a yes vote for Oklahoma City Schools.
So you you may notice that sometimes I'm smiling as Heath is talking, and it's because I'm genuinely excited. I'm genuinely grateful for this opportunity because I think this is truly the right team. And that includes all of you. Dr. Grover, you and I happened to cross paths just days after the the bond election in the fall. And you even gave me hope. I just expressed, you know, I'm sorry that it didn't go the way that you'd you'd intended perhaps or hoped for. And you just looked at me and you said, it's a it's a step forward. It's a step forward. What that tells us is that we need to better understand our community. That gave me hope. So I'm excited about this process. We've talked a lot about this process and this plan and essentially being about the students. We all, in our conversations, talk about this plan being the right plan for our students and our community and co-created together.
So as we close, I just want to thank, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to work with you. You know, we truly believe that we do bring the right people with the right urban educational experience with that local experience to the table to help you guys get to a successful bond referendum. And with that, we'll probably open it up to questions.
Okay, board, who wants to start?
I just want to, I was, I happen to be there for the RFP process, so I just want to reiterate things that were already addressed by Kate and Chad, but there there truly was consensus in that room when it came to the stakeholders involved, which we felt really good about going in this direction. And it was a really strong team, as you can see, and that pairing of skill sets, it just made sense going forward. And I personally just get very excited when we say things like shared vision and community. And I think truly, you know, those are central to making this all work. So I feel very confident in the team's abilities, and thank you for being here today.
Yeah, I would echo the same. I mean, Kate, thank you, and the other volunteers that served on that committee, I appreciate. And I appreciate sharing exactly what that process was like. Chad, thank you for your leadership in putting that together. I thought, for me, I think you're right, that it was unanimous when we, after our robust discussion, that this was the right choice for us. I think Shive's local experience in this community, 125 years that Shive's been here, certainly a lot of people that are embedded in this community. But for them to go out and really truly understand that what we needed also was a partner like MA Plus and the experience that they've got. So I appreciated how thorough the presentations seemed to be. There were other firms that seemed like they were really great architects, really good somewhere down the road when we want to build some buildings. But right now, the way that you approached it with a communication, and, you know, my two words are community engagement, they were when we did that exercise for the committee. And that's what I think is is absolutely critical for us, as Dr. Grover had said, that, you know, it it gave us an opportunity to learn. And I do agree that it was a step forward. It felt like a step back when it didn't pass, but it also told us that we need to understand thoroughly what this community is looking for, because I do think that the community wants significant change in our facilities so they can serve our kids and our community better. So again, just appreciate everybody that put the hard work in to getting us to this point.
Thank you for that.
Well, first of all, I'm very excited as we move forward, and I can appreciate the focuses are students. And it's really important that we have our community involved in this process. So I'm looking forward to this. Great presentation. It provided me with a lot more information of how we move forward, and I'm really looking forward to this next journey.
Thank you, Director Hammers.
More questions, comments? Thank you to the team for your presentation. You did a very impressive job for us. And I would echo what's already been said, that your sort of point that you came to here at the end was about learning. And I think for this board, that's what we've tried to put in front of us every time we've made a decision. It's about what's best for our students and what provides the best learning opportunity for them. So I was really glad to hear you really emphasize that point at the end. Thank you. Is there any more questions, comments from the board?
Thank you, President Garl.
My end. I see a couple other partners listed in this budget breakout here. Can you talk just a little bit about its school perceptions and Larson Construction?
As we put the team together, we knew it's going to be a quite a big task to do this survey of all registered voters, it's 88,000 people. It's a huge undertaking. So we look for a partner that, this firm has ex-superintendents and teachers that formed this company that is based in Wisconsin, that all they do is help school districts with post-mortems, a bond referendums, and also testing the market before you go to a bond referendum. And they have a very high degree of success where they test the market and can kind of see what what's going to be in harmony with the community. So it was a partner we thought, with the scale of this and the focus, we thought we would bring school perceptions to the table. An interesting stat, they they can get 17% to 20% return on these surveys, which is is a lot in marketing, that's a lot. If you get to 10%, they say that's the magic number, then you can really understand the community's feel on 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 certain issues. So I'm excited to to work with them, and it's a big effort, but it's something that they they focus on solely for for school districts.
You'll have to forgive my my eyes with the small writing on this, but when when do community perceptions or or community surveys go out?
Yeah, we're proposing two. Right away, we would meet Monday to kick off the post-mortem survey, to get feedback about the previous bond referendum. So that would happen as soon as we can get that together. And we do suggest next year, at this time, once we have a bond program together and options, is go back to the community and offer that up and do a survey explaining where we're going to test the market. And it will tell you if we're on the right track, it'll be a barometer of the success to come. Like I say, they have like a 94% success rate that the surveys really foretell the future of a bond proposal. So it's a good process that they have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I will add, one of the other partners that we have listed in that is Larson Construction. And so we actually have several of the Larson family here, Travis Schwartz, Doug Larson, Susan Gruber, Steve Gruber, all part of the construction company that would be helping us with cost estimating, construction feasibility, some of those things that kind of give us a contractor point of view when we're looking at the each individual site.
Director Bourgeney.
I do have one thing, and I'm sure it's already been included, it's a little bit in the weeds, but when we're looking at the school district stakeholder engagement, I'm just wondering if there are plans to involve representatives from ADA compliance, just considering universal design for classrooms and accessibility?
Yeah, that's a great point, and the answer is absolutely. This list is, there's so much more that's represented in this list that's not articulated on the list, right? And Greg also mentioned that we're, we have a working document where currently there are around 100 names on that list. We also recognize that that'll grow to more than that very, very easily. So there's absolutely that level of expertise that that we're considering in this process, too.
Other comments, questions? I think, as Vice President Tominski alluded to, I think the community understands that there's a need. So I'm really excited to embark on this and gather that information from the community. This community has a long history of supporting public schools, so I think we've got a great team together, and I'm excited to move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that, absolutely. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Our second presenter is Darius Ballard, Chief of Human Resources, and his informational presentation regarding the district management group's equitable staffing analysis.
Hello, and I'm joined by CFO Carla Hogan. She's going to be my backup for this presentation. To start things, I'd like to quote the artist Earl Simmons, who said, never become so involved with something that it blinds you. Never forget where you've came from. Someone will remind you. This quote reminds me to remember my background, and that shapes the reason I present to you today, our why. Books are written on the importance of the why for organizations. People are inspired by their organization's why, not their what or what they do. This is because our actions reflect our values and our beliefs, our why. Our organization shares this philosophy, and our why is to help every learner become future-ready with a plan, pathway, and passion for their future. We know that each learner comes to school with unique experiences, and that weight that they bring every day influences their individual day. It's this metaphorical backpack that they carry every- It's this metaphorical backpack that they carry every day. However, if we truly believe every learner, future-ready, when we believe, we all deserve the resources and experiences necessary to make the journey lighter. This is as true for our students as it is for our adults. And that is what we strive to do every day. And by the way, we call that equity. Providing equity ensures every learner can achieve to their full potential and become future-ready. I stand here today to ask for the Board of Education's approval and support as we employ concrete and actionable strategies in which we will allow, I'm sorry, we will able, we will be able, I'm sorry, to analyze and study staff schedules and workload to ensure our staff and students experience equitable allocation of resources. We believe this specific strategy will increase staff efficacy and elevate our students' plans, pathways, and passions, specifically graduating students with more than just a degree. Now, the rationale for this type of study is not to decrease the workforce or to save dollars. We know that some folks may think that, and we understand that, but with an equitable staffing analysis, there's much more to it. We're looking to study what is on our staff's metaphorical backpack. As I assume many of you have heard, and I know for a fact Dr. Grover has heard, our staff continues to explain and describe that their backpacks continue to be filled with items, with nothing ever being taken out. On top of that, when they arrive home, no work completed in that backpack that they put in their backpacks is placed on the refrigerator, metaphorically speaking, and acknowledged for success. And so our teachers may be leaning toward describing this as just their plate being filled, but we're sticking with the backpack analysis for today. This study will allow us to quantifiably understand and know what's in the backpack and what can be taken out. Additionally, it will empower us to customize these items in the backpack to create a highly efficacious workforce that is equitably distributed throughout the district. Here's our ask. We are seeking approval to collaborate with District Management Group, or DM Group, or we've called them DMG. They will provide us with structure, framework, and analysis of the staff procedures within Jefferson, Kennedy, Metro, and Washington High Schools, plus all six middle schools and three elementary schools, which will be named later. Why? We're facing challenges in meeting the increasing academic standards and their growing needs of students. To address these challenges, we've been hiring more teachers and more staff members, such as paraprofessionals, engagement specialists, behavior techs, special education interventionists, and many more positions. Managing a large number of teachers and staff members to provide a range of, I'm sorry, of programs and services to students is a daunting task for school and district leaders. At the building level, we have to schedule these teachers and staff members to deliver these services, while at the district level, we must allocate resources, keeping in mind equity, tight budgets, and contractual obligations. However, the tools available to us have not kept pace with the increasing complexity of managing the schedules and staffing assignments. Scheduling is often done at the school level without considering the district's overall strategy and priorities, which can make it difficult to meet the diverse needs of our students. This process also doesn't allow for multiple iterations to uncover the best schedule for our students. To address these challenges, Cedar Rapids Community School District is asking for approval to partner with DM Group, a company that provides analysis, research-driven scheduling support, and proprietary scheduling software for both our elementary schools and special education. By using these tools, our district will be able to transform the schedules and staffing practices to provide equitable opportunities and support for our students. In the interests of remaining transparent and to continue to build our trust and credibility with you as a board and any other interested community member, there are other phases that we could explore in the future. The first is a special education opportunity review. This review will provide best practice expertise to assist us in benchmarking our practices against those of similar districts, gaining a deeper understanding of how students are being served, and ensuring that resources are allocated where they will do best for our students to achieve scalable, sustainable, and lasting changes for our students, families, and staff. And the second is student-centered budgeting. This comprehensive strategic budgeting methodology would help us to create and sustain a budgeting process that ensures resources are allocated most effectively and efficiently, in line with district priorities and establishing strategic initiatives. The process is more comprehensive, thus more dollars, but the academic return on investment methodology is not a one-time thing. DM Group would provide us with the necessary tools to create a sustainable student-centered budget. Ultimately, this type of budgeting and resource allocation will allow us to track taxpayer dollars to ensure they are reaching students, achieving academic goals, and most importantly, lightening the metaphorical backpack all students enter our schools with. And to throw one more backpack analysis on there, the best way to describe this phase is every student carries in their backpack both the things already discussed and the best fiduciary resources to ensure their success. And that way, we can equitably allocate for every student throughout our school system.
Thank you, Darius.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Newman.
I was looking through the proposal that was included in the agenda packet, and there was one paragraph in the whole thing about including people in the process. How will our staff's voices be heard in this process? It just, it comes across as very data-focused, and I just want to make sure, like, kind of harkening back to what Aqwi said earlier about head and heart here, data-informed, not data-led. This feels very data-led. How do we hear our staff's voices in this?
Excellent question, and we've had quite a few conversations about that with DMG. And so there are interview phases, both at the district level, as well as with our administration, and even gets into our teachers, so that we have a really good understanding of things at ground level, and then as you're looking at it at the district level. That way, we could have more than just the numbers, we have the story behind the numbers, too.
So three elementary, six middle, four high schools, correct? And can you outline, I guess, the timeline for rolling this out and addressing these?
Sure. So our aim would be, once we get approval, to start this work as soon as possible, with a lot of this work being done before the end of the school year. If there is any carryover, it'll take place during the very, very beginning of the summer. That way, we have some really good comprehensive knowledge of how we're staffing, and this can help guide us in the future.
And a second piece, how is this paid for? Where are the funds coming from?
Excellent question as well. This would be part of our ESER funds.
Well, and I do appreciate, it's really important that we have our teachers involved in the process, because they're the ones that are in the classroom, and so I think that is very important, that we hear their voices, as well as everyone else's.
Hi.
Thanks for the awesome presentation. I am wondering if you can share with me, please, how this work, which is really rich in assessment, and kind of setting up some framework and structures, how and if it intersects with our ability to collect, like, attrition data, so that we can have an overall wellness of our staff and our system as an employer?
Yeah, I think there's two pieces there. So the DMG group will be working pretty heavily with a lot of our internal departments here at the district office. So, as you know, we've been working on being able to compile things like our attrition levels over the last few years, and so we'll be able to kind of harness their ability to compute a lot stronger, a lot quicker, as they're able to pull apart our data, and that's going to enhance our own knowledge, and ultimately, it should help with building our own kind of dashboard, so that we can make projections, and also look at kind of our historical data in a deeper, richer way.
Excellent, thank you.
On the historical data piece, I guess, just, I'm trying to get a sense, is this something we've done before as a district? Do you have any historical reference there? And you mentioned, like, the sustainability, so carrying this forward into the future, just getting a sense of the timeline there. Are we equipped on into the future to ensure that, you know, the work with District Management Group?
That's a fair question. I'd say we have attempted some of this work before, but it's not given us the results we wanted. And so part of this is, we're pairing with a cutting-edge firm, someone who's got the expertise, they do this for a living for a lot of school districts across America, and they're going to give us a lot more insight, they're going to be able to give us better numbers, better targets to hit, that are based upon research that both they've done and that they've learned from, from doing this level of work.
Wonderful, thank you.
Only three elementary schools, so can you just articulate why we're not doing all elementary schools? And is there something that we may learn from this that would cause us to go into all of our schools? Because I think I heard three elementary schools now, but not yet determined which three. Is that...
Yes, I think we have a pretty strong idea of what they are, we just aren't ready to disclose that yet, we'll come back to you with that in the future. But our aim was that we could use some of those elementary schools as kind of our prototype, to give us some knowledge, as we have some schools that are merging, so some of those numbers are changing. So we looked at just kind of having a small sample for our elementaries. We thought it also would be a little bit more fiscally responsible right now, and then that way, we'd have the ability to potentially scale up in the future.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So as part of that scale up, can you use some, like, trending for buildings to kind of forecast what staffing needs will be the following year and the year following that as well?
That's our ultimate ambition.
Gotcha.
Yes.
And also for placing, equitably placing staff in existing buildings dependent on characteristics that are being experienced in those buildings, number of IEPs, number of additional supports, or...
Yes, I mean, ultimately, some of the toughest work we're doing is determining when we start talking about support staff. So those engagement specialists, behavior techs, how many should be in the building? What helps determine those things? And so to have more concrete help to help make those determinations is what we really are pursuing here. And we're hoping that this process, we know this process will help us be able to make those determinations, and that should help us, not just for this year, but going forward, because we'll have a better sense of best practice versus us just trying to gauge it with our best interests in mind.
Will this study include all of our work groups, like, for instance, custodial, secretarial, or is it just certified paras?
The aim would be to look at everything, in its totality.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move on with our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement between Cedar Rapids Community School District and Shive Hattery Architecture Firm for 2023 through 2025 school years?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
And President Garlock.
Do we have a motion to approve the agreement between Cedar Rapids Community School District and District Management Group, DMG Group, Equitable Staffing Analysis, 2023 through 2024 school year?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And this is a roll-call vote.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Education's special meeting?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are officially adjourned at 6:34 PM.